It is 6:45 PM and I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a quorum present. Public comments, comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda related topics for a length of time, not to exceed three minutes per person. Comments on specific agenda items must be made when the item comes before the commission. To address the Planning and Zoning Commission, please complete. Yes, that part's not relevant here. No action may be taken by the Planning and Zoning Commission during public comments. Public hearing, first item, conduct a public hearing upon rezoning request for 20 acres, more or less, out of the James Manor survey number 40 and being located on 10507 US Highway 290 East Main or Texas from single-family SF1 and light commercial C1 to medium commercial C2. All right. Where I'm at here. So this is a public hearing for Riada Ford. And they have filed for to do like a little expansion to their business. But back when it was constructed, the zoning was off. I'm not sure. It was many years ago and they didn't verify the zoning when they approved the site development permit. And so it's own C1 and single-family. And now that they're filing for this expansion, they need to have consistent zoning and that zoning is the C2 medium commercial. And so the city, we're recommending that this gets approved when it gets to that item. Right now, this is just the public hearing and no one signed up to speak for this item. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
We can wait until we get to the actual thing to do that too, right?
Yeah, yeah. If you have questions, then you can ask them under the action item too.
Okay. And remind me, we don't vote, do we vote to close public discussion when no one's here to talk?
Yeah. So you just make a motion to, motion second to close the public hearing. So I can't, sorry, Isaac's here, right? I can't see him on my.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Maybe might as well catch up.
Motion.
If you ask questions, just let me know. I can't hear him right now. Sorry.
Oh, Isaac motioned.
Okay, see.
And I seconded, I seconded, Scott.
Okay, one second. Let me get my notes. All right. So Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
Someone just tell me what he says.
Yes.
Yes.
I might as well catch up, I promise at some point. Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Item two, conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for 0.36 acres, more or less, lots 11 through 15 in east half of lot 16, block 29, town of Maynor and being located at 109 North Lexington Street, Maynor, Texas, from single-family SF1 to downtown business DB.
All right. So this is, if you know that two-story building right at the corner there, where I think it's like Lily Mae's restaurant and there's a dance studio in there now. It's kind of a beige brick building. This is the property just north of that. There's old white, I think it was a barber shop a long time ago. The property mostly is covered with trees right now. And it's own single-family and they are proposing to do like a mixed-use building with retail on the first floor and eight apartment units above that. And so obviously they need to rezone it to downtown business district. It's within the area that that is permissible. So everything south of Boise is generally permissible for downtown business district. And again, no one has signed up to speak for this one or submitted comments on it. So if you have questions, I can answer them.
I move to close the public hearing on consent on number two.
Second.
So that was Isaac. He showed up now, finally.
You're zooming.
I know. All right. Somebody run through it. Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I have to scroll through. Item three, conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for 0.91 acres, more or less, out of the James Manor survey number 40, abstract number 546 and being located near US Highway 290 East and Greg Manor Road, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial C1 to multifamily 25 MF2.
All right. And so there is a representative here. If you have questions, so they're only here to answer if you have questions for them. This one, the bulk of the property, about the 10 acres or so, is already zoned for multifamily. It's already got the MF2 zoning on it. And if you're looking at the little map, you can see there's just a chunk that looks like it was missing from this tract, but they've, they've purchased this about one acre from the Jason property owner to add to their acreage. And so they're just looking for consistent zoning. And so like the whole 11 acres now or so will be zoned for multifamily. Yeah. So if you have questions for me or for the representative, we could bring them in, but basically that's it.
Do we know what is being planned for that area?
They do have a apartment complex proposed right now. They haven't submitted it. They're still in the process of plating, which they've kind of, with this additional land, they've paused submitting their plating because they'll have to update their plots, their concept plan that they have in right now to reflect the new acreage. But they have, on their side, they've, they're working on preliminary drawings and everything. So just typical apartments. And this is a project. They're going to extend Greg Maynor a little bit down to their, their site.
Okay, that's my next question.
Remember, yeah, so they're going to extend Greg Maynor and then the community impact fee, the SIP that we had done back in December, if you remember that, for that waste water line on Parsons. That was in part because of this development could be tying into the existing city lines that are there on Browning and Wheeler. And so that kind of with the additional demand to of just houses coming in. You know, we needed to upgrade that line to make it, I think, like a eight inch or 12 inch. So this project, it's been around for a while. We've been working on various development agreements and stuff for it. So, but now they're, they're looking to expand by about an acre and zone it to multifamily.
Do you know that we would ever move Greg Maynor all the way down to Parsons?
Yes. So it is slated to do that and you'll see later on the agenda. It comes up again. I think item 10. The developer, Dwyer, they have all the approvals to construct that road. They're just putting together the funding right now for that. And so I think the, for this apartment complex, they're going to be, should be ahead of that project though. So that's why they're extending the road a little bit, building a portion of it. And Dwyer will pick up the rest of it. Yeah. And then, and that, that road project also includes a waste water line that typically this, this development would have connected into, but since that line's not there and this project is going to be ahead of that project, they're they're, they're probably tying into existing city lines and Wheeler and Browning, but they may do something else, but likely this project will be before the, the road is fully built to Parsons, but that is an approved project. Have any other questions?
Does someone want to put forward a motion?
I move to accept agenda item number three, or I'm sorry, to close the public hearing for agenda item number three.
I'll second.
All right. Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item four, conduct a public hearing upon a rezoning request for 50.32 acres, more or less, out of the Greenberry Gate survey and being located near North FM 973 and Johnson Road, Maynor, Texas, from agricultural A to two-family TF and medium commercial C2.
All right. So I'll give you a quick rundown and then Mark, who is representing the applicant, he's going to give a quick presentation. We'll bring him in. But this 50 acres, it's across from the senior high school on 973. And the city we had, or the, the school district a couple of years ago at this point, had extended a waste water line through this property, through an easement on this property over to Stonewater. So they, when they did their senior high school expansion. And with that, you know, this property then had easy access to our wastewater. And so this, this project's come along and like the request says, they're looking to do two-family, which is a new residential category that we just established in March, which is like, it's a duplex product that they'd be building and then six acres of medium commercial. Because we always ask properties that are on 973 or 290 that they reserve some amount of commercial space. And additionally, the thoroughfare, Johnson Road on a thoroughfare plan is, goes through this property. And so they are creating that right away. And it should line up with the entrance to the high school. So that'll come a good new T intersection for the new Johnson Road. And that'll be the main intersection where they're proposing their commercial. But I guess moving market and he can talk more about the project or expand on what I said. So Mike, if you want to get him.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi Chairman Commissioners, this is Mark Baker, SEC Planning.
And.
I don't know.
Yeah, he's in.
Okay.
So I'm going to try to share my screen so you guys can see see what I'm looking at. Can you see my screen yet?
No.
Not yet.
No, it's not giving me that option right now for some reason.
Do you have to like make him a presenter, Scott?
I know all participants have the ability to share screen.
Is it by chance the presentation we have in this packet already?
Yes, it's the same one.
Okay.
Let's see, did that work, guys?
Okay.
There we go.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that. Scott did a good job just giving a rundown and that's, that's all I really wanted to do is give you guys an overview of this track. So you get your bearings on where it's located and how it kind of fits into your city comprehensive master plans. And so my name's Mark Baker with SEC Planning. We do land planning and entitlements and landscape architecture work. And I believe on the call also is Jake Straub with DR Horton and Seth Merig of BGE, who's the engineer on the job. And so hopefully we'll be able to answer any questions you might have after I go through these handful of slides. The, the property itself is right on 973. As you can see, it's kind of right directly across from the high school site. And it's about 50 acres and has the current Johnson Road on the southern boundary of the property. And then like Scott mentioned, we referenced the city's roadway map. And you'll see the, the green line here that's called the primary collector is what we are implementing or proposing to implement through this project. And so it'll be an alignment that runs along the, the northern, northern edge of the Stonewater development. So it'll, it'll kind of come right, right through here. You can see my cursor. It kind of lines up right across from where that drive comes out of the high school. And then from a land use standpoint, the comprehensive plan for the city currently shows general retail with SF3 medium density residential behind the retail. It's kind of a stepping effect from 973. And so we're proposing very similar where you have the higher intensity uses on 973, stepping to a more medium density, stepping to lighter density behind. The current zoning on the property, as you know, is just agriculture right now. And our proposed zoning, this, this shows the roadway as it connects through the middle of the property. So you end up with our proposal for the new two-family district on each side of that collector and then the commercial flanking, the intersections of each side of that new collector road. So there's about 44, a little over 44 acres of the two-family and six acres of the commercial that we're proposing. And we feel it's an appropriate use, just given across the street, the land use plan, you know, has heavy commercial, industrial, general retail, and obviously the high school. We feel that, that this location is well-suited for, for the application of this new two-family zoning district the city's recently created. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, what we're asking for at this point for your consideration. And so with that, I'll, I'll pass it back to you guys for any questions or clarifications you might have, and we'll do our best to, to answer those.
Well, I have one then. What type of businesses would be allowed in a C2?
C2, it's basically, it's just retail. It's a little larger format is the idea for it.
But I'm just more thinking like in its proximity to the high school, right?
Yeah, it's something inconsistent with what, what could go across from the high school. I mean, there's retail around the other schools too. Yeah.
You have a lot of uses that are conditional uses, but it's kind of just general convenience retail. You could have a daycare, I believe, as part of that. You could have a government office, personal services, restaurant.
Okay, yeah, no, I was just wondering.
Quite a broad range of uses, but a lot of them have conditions on them. So.
Yeah.
Think I'm still trying to look at as far as, Scott, if you can help me out. I know we were trying to see about having a light on that street. I know that there'll be a lot more traffic and it's a pretty high-traffic area, especially in the morning once, when school is, is going on for that commute. Is there, is there any time or timeframe for that as far as what they're proposing?
So for Johnson, where they're proposing to be, there hasn't been discussion of a light. There is one for Greg, Greg Lane. And so that's not too far, which kind of creates spacing with it. It, it made that with this development and the traffic coming off Johnson and the school that it warrants a light and the, the spacing, the distance would be the text out, but they would, I think it's 465 feet. I'm not sure. They, they do have some spacing required between lights, but it should be, they may be able to have a light there and Greg. They should be fine because they're doing one at Greg and Tina Harrow and those are closer than Greg in this future Johnson Road alignment.
Okay.
And part, part of what we'll need to do is TIA is part of the development of this tract. And, and so we'll plan on complying with the recommendations of that report. And so that'll, that'll probably have determinations that affect those decisions, whether that's decel lanes or traffic warrants for signals or any of those types of questions that you have, those will be vetted when the transportation and impact analysis is performed.
Gotcha. On the two-family, is that same as duplexes?
It is, yeah.
I have a question. Why two-family versus the single-family? What, maybe I missed that earlier.
It's just, it's a little bit higher density per acre yield on a. And it's, it provides a diversity of product from the single-family behind. So it's, it becomes similar to like multifamily where it becomes kind of a transitional use. It's a little bit higher density from a higher intensity roadway and commercial stepping down in density a little bit before you hit the single-family detached. So it's, it becomes a transitional type land use. And the, and the DR Horton has that product in their portfolio to, to meet that specific market.
All right, thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions? If not, we can, does someone want to make a motion to close the discussion?
Motion to close.
A second.
All right. Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Cool. Thanks.
Well, thanks for coming to talk to us, Mark.
All right. Yes. Nice to visit with you guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. So on to item five, which is the consent agenda, I believe. I'm scrolling, so I can't really see. Consideration discussion, possible action to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of August 12th, 2020, regular session and August 26th, 2020, called special session. Does anyone have any?
Oh, sorry.
Go.
I, I moved to per the minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second.
Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Sorry. All right, I'm good. Item number six, consideration discussion of possible action on a rezoning request for 20 acres, more or less out of the James Manor survey number 40 and being located at 10507 US Highway 290 East, Maynor, Texas, from single-family SF1 and light commercial C1 to medium commercial C2.
So as mentioned under the public hearing, they're just looking to expand their business and we, we told them they need conforming zoning amongst other things. But, uh, so this is the action items. We're just looking for a motion and we are recommending approval for this one.
I have a question on this. Do we have an ideas to what the expansion looks like?
Yes. So if you're looking at it from 290, you can see all these, like their service center and the, they're, all the, the repair shop area. There's a building behind that, that kind of runs perpendicular to kind of that stuff. And they're, they're expanding that. They're doubling the size of that. So I think it's associated with their service base area, but yeah, and then they're going to be, or should be fixing up the parking. So when you see it, there's a lot of cars parked in the driveways and areas. And so they'll be increasing the parking areas for, I think they're the cars they work on.
Just from the aerial that I looked at, it looks like about half of the property is not developed currently.
Going into that area either. So the, they, they're kind of working in their 10-acre area and then they have that back 10 acres, which includes their detention. And so they, I think they purposely are not expanding enough that they have to increase the amount of detention. Their detention pond was sized for these kind of future expansions. And so under their site plan that they're, they've submitted, they don't have to resize or do anything with their detention. It's already adequately sized.
Is there any plans for buffering between them and the residential zones areas next to them?
Yes. Yeah, we did bring up our new standards for buffering and require 25 or 15-foot wide buffer yard and it has planting requirements for how close your trees need to be and fencing and all that.
That's all I have.
If anyone's have questions on this. I'm just on, I'm making a motion.
Motion to approve the rezoning request.
This is number, item number two, right? Agenda item number two.
Six.
Six. Yeah, I think the public hearing is.
Oh, it says agenda item number two on page five.
I'm all the way down on page 43.
Oh, are you? Okay.
Oh, I see. That was the first, that was the.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Sorry.
Yeah, the summary forms, we, we have a new agenda software. We're still.
Oh, okay. Okay, it's twice. Okay. I was following a different.
That's why it's taking a while for me to scroll.
Yeah.
A lot of pages.
We're getting used.
Yeah, but I'm happy to be at page 43 rather than page five. So that's my.
I'll second.
All right. Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer. And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consideration, discussion and possible action on a rezoning request for point thirty-six acres, more or less lots eleven through fifteen and east half of lot sixteen, block twenty-nine town of Maynor and being located at one zero nine North Lexington Street, Maynor, Texas, from single family SF one to downtown business DB.
And this is a three-story mixed-use building. We were recommending approval for it.
And it's eight stories, you said, or did I do that wrong?
Three stories.
Three.
Eight apartments in it, so it's three retail spaces and then four apartments and four apartments.
Okay, that's very different to what I was thinking. I'm like, what?
Is this, because I know those that that side of Lexington, some of the roads get really narrow and kind of rough. Is and that's why we've had to like, you know, we there have been some other times where people have come to speak against stuff being being built there because of that. Is that a concern like for this? Probably, I mean, do they have a plan for parking?
They do. Right now they have like four spots or something like parallel spots on Lexington, which needs state approval. They'll have to get some kind of state approval for that, I believe. And then four or five spots parallel on voice, and so they'll be creating that extra width of pavement. So the road for voice now it is probably like a twenty-five or twenty-four foot of pavement, and they'll add on the sufficient space for parking on that. And then the remainder of the parking is onsite, so they'll have a driveway of voice that'll pull into us parking lot for twenty cars, I think it is.
Oh, wow. I'm surprised you can fit twenty cars like
Yeah, it's ten and ten, if I remember their their
What's the impervious cover for this property?
So the way we measure impervious cover, it's a little different. We only look at building coverage and downtown business district. I think it go up to like ninety percent coverage. It's meant, if you know like Ramos is and Mainor Grocery, it's kind of meant to mirror that type of the development where, you know, the buildings are attached or built out to the close to the street and taking up almost the full length of the lot. And so this property isn't at that level. They're not at ninety percent. But we don't calculate the parking sidewalks and anything like that and impervious cover.
Do we have any plans for Lexington as far as rebuilding it or or some kind of, you know, tree scape throughway?
So Lexington and Parsons in front of Mainor Grocery and Ramos and all that, that's the state right of way. And so we're limited as a city with what we can do, like, you know, we can't put trees. It's we can't really do a lot with the parking or, you know, decorative lighting until it becomes a city road. And so we do have for these properties under our landscaping ordinance, streetscape landscaping. And so there's a, I think it's twenty-five feet or fifteen feet that goes around Lexington and boys. That's on their property that they're building has to be set back from that. They'll plant trees in. And so in a way, it'll be, it'll look like trees on the right of way, but really those trees are on their property, which is good because there are plans that are in the works right now that the Lagos development is doing, that'll improve the intersection of Lexington and Parsons to include some turn lanes, and so that'll widen it a bit. And so if they were to put trees in the right of way, those may get removed if if this project, you know, puts a turn lane closer to their property.
You bring another question to mind, and when nine seventy-three is built around Maynor, will the Parsons and Lexington become city right of way?
So it's also loop two twelve. So if if the state will also abandon loop two twelve as a state right of way, then we could make it a city road. So every Lexington south of Parsons, like going towards Lagos, that would become a city road when nine seventy-three is rerouted, but with loop two twelve still there, it's still a state right of way. So that also wouldn't have to become a city road too.
Okay, I believe there's, I may be wrong, but I believe there are some parts of Austin that have state designations but are still city right of way. So I don't know if that's a possibility in the future for just a designation, but without it actually being state right of way.
There may be something that I'm I'm not familiar with, if you know, once nine seventy-three gets rerouted, that's the higher traffic road. So the state may allow the city to do improvements if it remains loop two twelve. They may allow the city to start treating it as a city road with parking and landscaping and lighting. Whereas now it's it's more difficult as nine seventy-three.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions on this one?
Have any questions?
Can we have a motion?
I move to approve agenda item number seven.
I'll second it.
All right, Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
And item eight, consideration, discussion and possible action upon a rezoning request for point ninety-one acres, more or less out of the James Maynor survey number forty, abstract number five hundred forty-six and being located near U S Highway two ninety east and Greg Maynor Road, Maynor, Texas, from light commercial C one to multifamily twenty-five MF two.
Yeah, so this was the one that the that project that is adding on an acre to their existing multifamily and the city were were recommending approval.
Yeah, personally, I'd just like to know that Greg Maynor is being extended down there to help with traffic. That's definitely going to increase, so.
Yeah, yeah, their 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 main access is off the the section of Greg Maynor, they'll be extending and their connection to either Browning or Wheeler will just be a like a fire gate, basically. So it's emergency access only. It shouldn't be anything that anyone's normally using. And I'll also add that the one acre that they're proposing to add, I've seen in their kind of preliminary site plans. This is a dog park in parking. They're not using it to build more apartments. It's more just space for them to have a dog park and a couple of extra parking spaces.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Does anyone have questions on this one? Well, if we can move for a motion, then.
Motion. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll move to that we approved agenda item number eight.
A second.
Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, item nine, consideration, discussion and possible action on rezoning for fifty point thirty-two acres, more or less out of the Greenberry Gates survey and being located at north FM nine seventy-three and Johnson Road, Maynor, Texas, from agricultural A to two-family TF and medium commercial C two.
Yes, I heard from Mark and their plans and, you know, the city were recommending approval for this one.
Does anyone have any questions on this one?
No, it sounds like the roads that the nine seventy-three expansion is going to help, you know, support this, right?
The Johnson Road alignment.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be another main road because the existing Johnson Road, I mean, that's not going to go anywhere.
But like the widening of nine seventy-three.
I don't think that's going to reach out there for a while, though.
Yeah, that'll be a ways out.
That's too far out, yeah.
Yeah, but there are, Texas is planning lights, like I said, Greg Lane and Tina Harrow and Shadowland Trace and Suncrest. So they'll be, and then potentially if it meets warrants, you know, this project as well, Johnson and the high school, after they do the TIA, as Mark mentioned. And so there'll be the adequate spacing on nine seventy-three. I know right now it's just that without there not being any stoplights, sometimes there aren't traffic. And they've added those turn lanes on if you've been on it, but it left turns, so it helps to kind of keep traffic going.
Yeah, it's been better. Okay, I move to approve agenda item number nine.
I'll second.
All right, Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Item ten, consideration, discussion and possible action on a one-year extension request from the Los Angeles Greg Maynor Road final plat.
All right, so as I mentioned before, Greg Maynor comes up again. So this project, the developer has indicated that they're working a lot closer now to getting it constructed. There was a previous one year extension, so, but that expires next week. And so they are asking to do another one, so they don't have to go through the whole plating process again. And they're they're working with their intratagland pit, which in some ways funds this road too. And so they're, we're working through that with them right now. There's ongoing discussions. And so we're recommending that this gets approved, so that way they can start on their road as soon as they're ready in the near future versus having to refile their subdivision flats and plans and kind of slow it down a little bit because we're anxious just as much as everyone else is for some roadway connections.
Well, it seems that it's been going fairly consistent without any long lapses, so didn't sound like it's a big deal.
No, and I know like, one thing with flats getting extended or potentially expiring is, you know, if our development standards change, you know, we may want it kind of to expire because then they have to come to the new standard. But our standards haven't changed, so you know what they have on file now is, you know, they're still applicable, so it's, you know, whatever they build is still the city standard, and so we have no issue with how the plat has been approved in the past.
Are there any other questions on this one? If not, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number ten.
A second.
All right, Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item eleven, consideration, discussion and possible action on a preliminary plat for idea, Maynor, one lot on thirteen point nineteen acres, more or less, and being located in north FM nine seventy-three and Suncrest Road, Maynor, Texas.
This plat, it just hasn't been approved by engineers, and so we just need to take an action on it basically within a set time. And so we're just recommending to deny it just until the time that it gets approved by engineers. But right now, our engineers haven't commented on it yet, so we're just looking for denial.
Quick question before we like do that. Is this the same parent company for the idea that was in the news about like buying like extravagant spending and doing a lot unethical things?
I'm not familiar with those stories, but if it's the idea charter school.
It is.
So. But I know this project, they've submitted their site plan and their building plans. And so they're working kind of everything all at once. They're plating and their development permits altogether.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I move to deny agenda item number eleven.
Second.
All right, Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Thanks.
Great, unless I'm wrong.
We did it, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who did the first one?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
A second.
All right.
We accomplished a lot today.
Chairperson Tryon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Rowe.
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.